Good.
Feed a family of four.
Julie, just those three cards?
Okay.
We do have a quorum to call City Council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation led by myself and the pledges about the American Texas flag led by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Gilmore. Most gracious Almighty God, our Creator and our Redeemer, we thank you so much for each and everything you give us each and every day of our lives. We thank you for loving us unconditionally. We thank you for watching over us and protecting us, for being there always, no matter what our needs or joys are, you're always there. We thank you Almighty God for taking care of us. We ask special blessings on those who are ill, who are suffering, those who are oppressed, those who are hungry, and those who have lost loved ones. We ask them that you give them your peace, your comfort, and your understanding that all good things will come through you. We ask you special blessing on those who fight each and every day of their life for justice, for freedom, to protect our lives here at home and abroad, so that we might live in peace, in joy, and love with one another. We ask us here at this meeting tonight to help us to have open minds and open hearts that we might hear the thoughts of every single citizen and every person here. We ask us to do things that will be pleasing unto you. All this I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one one indivisible.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for zone change request from single-family residential R-75 in Office District OD to public use PU on 1.767 acres located between Harrod Street and Charles Street on the north side of Church Street, further identified in the attached Exhibit A to the ordinance as requested by the city of Lewisville, the property owner. The city brought this property as well as the land for the MCL Grand Theater from the Temple Baptist Church in 2001. The property is currently vacant and has a combination of zoning designations. The city of Lewisville requested designation of public use is in compliance with the Old Town Master Plans recommended zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their June 11, 2013, meeting by a vote of five zero. Recommendation of staff is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I do not have any comments or cards. Entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the zoning change as written.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve is presented, and a second by, I'm sorry, Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Mayor.
Oops, I'm sorry, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas that amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas granting zoning changes on the 1.76 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from single-family residential district zoning and office district zoning to public use district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two is public hearing, consideration of ordinance for zone change request from Old Town Mixed Use Two to public use on three tracts totaling .87 acres located at the northwest corner of Walter Street and Mill Street, further identified in the attached Exhibit A to the ordinance as requested by the city of Lewisville, the property owner. The city purchased this property in 2013. The property is currently zoned Old Town Mixed Use Two. Public governmental agency uses are permitted in all zoning districts, providing the agency adheres to the general regulations of the district in which the use is located. Public use zoning will allow for utilization of the property in a manner that benefits all of Old Town. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of three-two of the request at their June 11, 2013, meeting. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I do not have any cards or anything. Entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to close public hearing?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Ferguson? I mean, Councilman Gilmore, excuse me.
Move to approve as stated.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as stated, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas that amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas granting zoning changes on the .87 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from Old Town Mixed Use Two district zoning to public use district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three is the public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 17-26A of the Lewisville City Code to reduce the minimum land requirement from 30 to five acres for a planned unit development. The planned unit development district allows for innovative community design concepts featuring a mix of uses. However, the public use development district has seldom been utilized in the past primarily due to the considerable property requirement of 30 acres. Modification of the PUD regulations to require a minimum development size of five acres would significantly improve the functionality of this zoning category and facilitate redevelopment of older properties with unique development challenges. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the amendment by a five-o vote at their June 11, 2013, meeting. Recommendation of staff is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Entertain a motion, I do not have any cards in this, entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So.
Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Tierney?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve is presented by Councilman Tierney?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham, any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas amending Chapter 17-26A Plan Unit Development Regulations of the Lewisville City Code by reducing the minimum land requirement from 30 to five acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do have a card filled out, Mr. Brian Webb. If you could come forward and name and address for the record, please, sir.
Brian Webb, 4112 High Road, Flower Mount, Texas, 75022. First off, thank you very much for allowing me to come to visit with y'all. It's been a long time, and it's good to see a bunch of friendly faces up here. I'm here tonight to bring everyone on council up to speed of an initiative that Flower Mount's undertaken. We started talking about it just about a year ago, and councilmember Dixon, myself, saw the need in our community and anticipated a similar need in our surrounding communities to hold a conversation on the subject of drugs. So, we've moved forward, we've picked a date to have a community drug summit, and our hope is that this will not be Flower Mount-centric. Our hope is to bring in our neighbors from Lewisville, Highland Village, and other close by communities who want to join this conversation. The vision right now is on August the 10th, it's a Saturday, we'll be holding it at Treach Memorial Methodist Church. It'll be an all-day item going from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We'll have a series of panel discussions as well as time at the end to bring it all together and allow the community to hear from panels focused from the perspective of law enforcement, our schools, organizations who provide support to both families and those folks who are fighting addictions. And so, I look forward to doing this, and I hope that we can do it together. I recognize you can't take any action, but if at some point in time, if Julie could get some information from you folks, somebody who would like to be point person from the council that I could reach out to, share our thoughts, get input from you folks as to folks that you might think appropriate to sit on some of these panels, would love to have it. So, thank you again very much.
Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate your initiative here and appreciate you getting in touch with us.
Absolutely. Take care, it's good to see you all.
Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any cards filled out and did not have anyone asked to have it pulled. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is number 10, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Four, Article 10, fences located at 1805 South Valley Parkway as requested by Bradley and Elona Compton, the property owners. The owners have two adjoining lots located on South Valley Parkway in the Timber Creek Acres subdivision. One is where their residence is built, and the other lot is undeveloped due to the floodway. A fence permit for the undeveloped lot was insured, was issued in error. The fence is five feet in height, while city ordinance requires the fence to be no higher than three and one-half feet in height when located in the front yard. The variance request is to allow the fence to remain at five feet in height. Recommendation is that the council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's nothing else, I move to approve.
Second.
I do have Mr. Compton here, I'm sorry, I do have Mr. Bradley Wayne Compton here. He was in support of this. He did not wish to speak, but he was here to answer any questions if he wanted had any, so I don't take it anybody had any questions. So, had a motion approved by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Ferguson? Any discussion?
Mayor, I drive down there almost daily, and that fence looks great. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item 11 is second and final reading. Consideration of an ordinance of the city, consideration of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to Lone Star Gas Company, DBA Atmos Energy Corporation, and providing an effective date. Lone Star gas franchise with the city of Lewisville expired on April 1, 2013. It's been the city's practice to extend the term of the prior franchise until a new franchise is repaired and executed. Staff is requesting an extension of the current franchise ordinance until December 31, 2013. The proposed ordinance provides for the continuation of the terms and conditions. The Lewisville City Council Charter requires two readings of this ordinance within 30 days in between. City council approved the first reading of the ordinance on May 6, 2013 by a vote of five zero. This is the second reading. Item 12 is consideration of a Brownfield.
I actually have to read it.
Oh, you gotta read it, I'm sorry.
This is, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to Lone Star Gas Company, doing business as Atmos Energy Corporation, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counselor, I'm sorry. Item 12 is consideration of a Brownfield Assessment Program application for the property at 1725 Lake Point Drive. Prime Controls has submitted an application for participation in the program. Adequate funds are available in the hazardous materials grant to cover the proposed assessment activities. The Brownfields Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of this Brownfield Assessment Program application at its meeting, May 21, 2013. Recommendation is that city council approve the Brownfield Assessment Program application for the property at 1725 Lake Point Drive. Councilman Ferguson?
More than happy to see the Brownfields money used this way. I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of addition of two new activities to the 2013 Western Days Event and Rain Accumulation Insurance and approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $35,922 from the Hotel Motel Fund. Actually, that's been clarified, let me reread that. The new wording should be, consideration of addition of a beer tasting activity to the Western Days Event and approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $35,922 to cover the cost of the beer tasting activity, $15,172, expanded entertainment, $15,000, and event rain insurance of $5,750. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I think I'd like to break this into two sections. One would be the insurance and the second stage, to go ahead and get that approved. We had some conversation workshop, and I think it would be more than fair to give staff a little bit more time to negotiate the beer tasting and come back with some options, and I'd like to see about tabling that section. So, my first motion would be I'd move to approve the insurance and the second stage expenditures.
Second.
Have a motion by, well, before we do that, before I do that, I did have a card here, I failed to read, I'm sorry, by John Gilbert. He has not wished to speak, but he is here to answer any questions you might have, he is with G Texas.
Thanks.
We do have a question, I mean, a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve the expanded entertainment and the insurance, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table the beer tasting until such time as staff can bring that back to us after a little bit more discussion.
Next.
We need to table to a date certain.
With a date certain?
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
July 1st.
Okay, July 1st.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to table the remainder of the item, which is the beer tasting activity, to the July 1 meeting.
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, discussion and consideration of appointments to various boards and commissions committee on June 30th. Various terms of office of the city boards, commissions, and committees will expire. Those positions have been identified and current opponents notified. The board commission committee appointment process notebooks have been created for city council reviews. I did ask y'all to meet in, I mean, get together in teams, and I do appreciate you contacting the people and visiting with them. I appreciate all the legwork you've done the last couple of weeks, and I'm gonna let each one of you give your recommendations for your group. I'll start with you, Councilman Durham, since you were so gracious to help me.
First one we had, Mayor, was the Old Town Design Review Committee. You and I recommended that we reappoint Sharon Ellis and Bill Peck.
Pleasure.
And then, for place number one, Casey Dunn, and place number five to appoint Doug Kilo. And if there's no objection, I'll put that in the form of a motion if I can.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, do you want me to finish the ZBOA?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You forgot about that one.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry.
For the ZBOA, we recommend reappointing Tom Jensen and Mary Ellen Mixa, and for alternate place number one, we recommend Charles Levett. And if there's no objection or any more discussion, I'll move to put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham? Second by Councilman Tierney? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Durham, I apologize for skipping over that. Councilman Tierney?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I worked with Councilman Ferguson on the library board and planning and zoning. I don't have our list in front of me, I think he does. Neil, if you could take it over.
Okay.
Can we go ahead?
Go right ahead.
Okay. On the library board, place one, there's a vacancy. We've selected James F. Tucker to fill that vacancy, so that's place one. For place three, reappoint Kathleen Rodriguez. Place five, reappoint Tony Faber. And place seven, reappoint Carolyn Richard. And I move to do that, I should have put that at the front.
That's all right. Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
A second by Councilman Tierney? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I have planning and zoning. For planning and zoning, I move to appoint Brandon Jones to place two to fill a vacancy. Alvin Turner reappointed to place four, and Kristen Green appointed to place six to fill a vacancy.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
A second by Councilman Durham? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's it.
Councilman Tierney, I believe you have one other thing there.
Yes, Mayor, the current board members, it's listed on the memo, the Animal Services Advisory Committee, and as I understand it, you will be stepping down from there. And I guess, is it, you want me to put it in a motion from myself to appoint myself?
That sounds good.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint myself to the Animal Services Advisory Committee.
Can you get a second?
I will also second it.
Okay, now we're gonna vote him down. Now we're gonna vote him down. Come back on board. Have a motion and a second, who is the second?
Rudy.
Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. I was teamed with Councilman Vaughn, and unfortunately, he's not able to be here tonight, but we did communicate on the phone, and I understand that he and I are in agreement, which is always, always good. Like to move to appoint the following folks to the two openings on our parks board, Mr. William Schull and Mr. Jim Collier. Also like to appoint or reappoint Mr. Scott Strange to Tiers One. And we had some conversation, and due to the limited schedule of Tiers Two, we would be recommending Mr. Brandon Jones.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore?
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Gilmore, for working with Mr. Vaughn, and I will call him and thank him also. Appreciate you communicate with him.
It was my distinct pleasure, as always.
I have one other appointment?
Councilman Ferguson, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. For Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation and Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation, appoint Charles Emery to place one on the Housing Finance Corporation, and for Industrial Development Corporation, appoint R.L. Crawford to place number one, Mary Smith place two, and Hurl Scruggs to place number four.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
A second by Councilman Gilmore? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The rest of the other appointments, we will make at the next meeting. Item 15 is consideration of excusing Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn from attendance at the city council meetings held on May 21, 2013, June 3, 2013, and June 17, 2013. Due to a serious health concern, Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn has been unable to attend the May 21, 2013, June 2000, June 3, 2013, and June 17, 2013, city council meetings. In accordance with Section 3.02 Qualifications of the City Charter, the city council may excuse Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn for these abuses. Reputation is council consider excusing Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn. I will tell council and everyone that I have been in contact with him on a regular basis. He is improving quite a bit. In fact, his, the last week, his condition has become much better and is looking to get out of the hospital. get out of the hospital very soon. He's actually in rehab and he's looking to get out very soon, sooner than they thought and he thinks he should be able to attend the next meeting. So, I would highly recommend that we do excuse his absences here. He has been working, as Councilman Gilmore said, he worked with him on the appointing the boards and commission people and he's been in constant contact with our city secretary and myself, asking what things he can do to help with the council while he's been there in rehab. With that entertaining motion?
Move to approve the, move to excuse the absences of Mayor Protem Vaughn.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the absences, a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, maybe I can get through this part. Reports. Nika? Nothing? Bob? Anything? Chief?
Yes, Mayor, I'm gonna eat a little humble pie and would like to publicly congratulate our police department in this year's Battle of the Badge. They won the contest this year. It was a fun event. Weather was perfect. The venue side at Railroad Street Park this year was great. The crowd seemed to be, a lot of people in attendance all throughout the day. So, it's a great event and I congratulate Chief Kerbo and his guys for pulling it out this year.
Chief Kerbo? Why was you congratulating him? Was he there?
In spirit. I was told he was there in spirit.
We'll get to that in a minute, I guess. But, but I'm gonna give you a chance to kinda redeem you and your fellow members. What happened later on in the day there, Chief? As the tournament progressed?
Well, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but the rest of the story is that we made it through the loser's bracket. We met our esteemed police department later in the day and sent them home. So, but, and we made it to the championship game and were pretty beat up by that time of the day, playing our seventh game in one day. So, Carrollton Fire Department beat us in the championship, but we did get there and it was, it was a fun day and a lot of sore guys afterwards, a lot of sore legs.
It was a great day. We appreciate all of you participating in that and being out there. Melinda? Chief, I want to commend you and your fellow officers. They did a great job while they were out there. I didn't see all the games, but I did see the first game. They were tremendous. I think as Chief Tinnell will tell you, they were pretty stout early in the morning. So, we want to commend them for that. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
And you're just taking our word that they won. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Well, my guy said what they did too, so.
Why would they lie?
You were missed, but we certainly understand. Carol? Nothing? Donna?
No, sir.
Nothing? Brenda?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ferris, sir? Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, ma'am, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think everyone, most of the council and many of the staff members have met our new chamber president, Ray Hernandez. One of Ray's initiatives is gonna be to work closely as possible with, with the council and continue the valued relationship between the Chamber of Commerce and the council. So, he would like to regularly attend. He couldn't attend tonight, but he did send Carol Longacre, who's on the executive board for the Chamber of Commerce, to help maintain that relationship. Thank you, Carol, for coming.
Thank you, and I agree with you. Ray has been tremendous in getting out there and getting to the forefront, making sure he meets everybody as quickly as possible and not just meet them, but come back and have follow-up meetings and spend time with them. And I really look forward to a great relationship and I think he'll be a tremendous asset for our chamber. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I've gotta beg some forgiveness. I forgot that we do need to have a second appointment for that tiers two, which we had determined would be Mr. Hernandez, which is what raised the flag. I didn't have it on my notes. Is there an opportunity for us to just go back and amend that?
No.
That's fair enough.
No.
Don't ask, you don't get.
No, we can do that. We have not adjourned.
Motion reconsidered?
We haven't closed the meeting, so.
Right, I know, Ben. So, we can just go back and do a motion.
I know my Robert rules.
Okay, we'll go back to item 14. And did you have something that you'd like to reconsider?
I'd like to move for parks, Mr. Bill Schull, Mr. Jim Collier. For tiers one, Mr. Scott Strange. And for tiers two, Mr. Brandon Jones and Mr. Ray Hernandez.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore?
Second.
A second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
My apologies.
That's all right. I was kinda off tonight myself, so I appreciate it.
And then, I just have, I have a brief, a couple of brief comments. A lot of folks being outdoors, don't let off on the mosquito prevention, especially with the rains that we've been having. There's lots of standing water. And for those of you who are seeing water restrictions and wanna do something, be a little more active about it. The library, beginning Tuesday, this was back in April, but it continues first Tuesday of every month, the Texas A&M Ag Life Extension is offering free landscaping classes over at our library and it's 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Actually, I'm sorry, it's not at the library, it's at the Keely Operations Center, but you can reach in, it's on the city website, and you can learn some great new ways to landscape and maybe not use quite so much water this summer. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. And to that, I just wanna say that I do appreciate everybody chipping in and working on this, this program together, because I think this will be a great program going forward. Mr. King?
Mayor, we have another 2025 meeting this Wednesday, I believe, the 19th. This one is at the Senior Center, I believe. So, if you didn't make the first meeting or you're a citizen out there and you wanna provide input, whether you made it or not at the first meeting, you've got another opportunity this week on the 19th. That meeting starts at what time, Donna?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, Senior Center, this coming Wednesday, the 19th.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, I was at the Battle of the Bold, so I'm, Battle of the Badge.
Oh! How pun intended there.
That was a Freudian slip there, but. Battle of the Badge and that first game was interesting, very interesting. So, it set, set me wondering how this was gonna turn out the rest of the day, I'll tell you that. Anyway, also went over to Pause in the Park. That, I would say, was a big success. A lot of people there saw the cutest little miniature dachshund, red dachshund named Charlie. And if I didn't have four dogs, I would've taken him home and about probably 15 minutes later, I saw a lady carrying him around. So, he got adopted, I know, and they adopted some other dogs. So, I think that was a real successful event and, like I say, a lot of folks out there. So, it was a great day. The weather was fabulous. Things coming up tomorrow night, Sounds of Lewisville Summer Concert Series, The Pit Pops play tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, in the Courtyard at the MCL Grand. And then, a week later, just in time for my annual birthday salute, The Kildaires will play on June 25th, the following Tuesday, 7:00 PM. So, check all that out at soundsoflewisville.com. Also, Lewisville Summer Musicals, Texas Family Musicals is presenting Red Skeletons American Way, which is a musical review. There's multiple performances from July 5th, on July 5th and 6th, so I can go to mclgrand.com and get more information on that. And then, continued yoga in the courtyard that I always tell you will not find me at, but a lot of people do go, including my wife. And that starts, that's on Wednesday nights, 6:00 PM, and it's absolutely free. And Visual Arts Leagues continue to have their jam sessions on Friday nights in the art gallery, what they call their Acoustic Fridays, and that's Friday night, 7:00 PM, also free. In the art gallery, a solo exhibit by Dan Lattimore. I've seen Dan's work before. He's quite talented. He was also the winner of the 2013 Val Fresh Ideas Competition. And then, there's photography by Visual Arts League members, and that's both in the gallery and in the hallways at the MCL Grand. And then, finally, there's a Fresh Ideas exhibit, that's an annual thing that Val does, coming up at the MCL Grand, starting June 29th through August 10th. So, you can check that out and I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Julie? Officer, once again, we appreciate you being here tonight and we appreciate the job you do each and every day, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we will See if he's coming. I got a quorum.
I think he's gone. We got a quorum. Let's go.
Yeah. We'll convene back regular session. Is there any action to be taken, council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Care of that?
Huh?
Care of that?